Good evening, school board meeting is called to order. Would you please stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Spalding.
Here.
Mrs. Bresia.
Here.
Ms. Island.
Here.
And Ms. Blen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
No ma'am.
May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Spalding, that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, Board Committee reports, and I'll call first on Mr. Hollingsworth, Chair of the Academics, or yeah, Academics Committee.
Thank you Chair. The Academic Committee met on October 25th to discuss new courses that would be added to Osborne High School's curriculum on the 24-25 school year. The courses will be presented to the entire board during the future, during future meetings. We also discussed the presidential primary, and today, Mr. Hawkins will provide more information about the presidential primary and its impact on our 23-24 school calendar.
Thank you sir. Okay, this evening we have two opportunities for the public to come speak, citizens' comments, and a public hearing, we have sign up sheets up front if there's anybody that'd like to speak. Anybody that'd like to speak for citizens' comments? Seeing and hearing none, I'll ask for anyone that would like to speak for the public hearing. This is on our capital improvement plan. Seeing and hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Chair.
Yes.
I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion by Mrs. Spalding, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Tonight on the discussion agenda, we have an update from our student achievement department on professional learning. Ms. Katie Keegan, Director of Professional Learning, and Ms. Erica Loesch, Professional Learning Coordinator, will provide information about the mentoring and professional growth support program. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. I am always honored to be here to share updates on behalf of the professional learning team. This, this team of passionate leaders always strives to provide opportunities for staff to engage in learning that is aligned to their goals and the goals of the division. I am happy to have one of our team members here with us tonight, Erica Loesch, and you will hear from her in just a couple minutes. We are continually evaluating the needs of educators to develop ways that we can best support their growth and development. And so tonight, we want to share with you a new program that has been created as a way to meet diverse needs in a systematic way. This program, the Mentoring and Professional Growth Support Program, or MAPS, program is designed to engage educators for continuous improvement.
Do you all have the slides?
MAPS presentation.
Okay, there we go.
Perfect. The purpose of the Mentoring and Professional Growth Support, or MAPS, program is to provide additional guidance, support, and resources in order to further develop and retain teachers who are diverse, high-quality educators that are held accountable for making data-informed decisions and implementing best practices in specific areas aligned with the teacher performance evaluation standards. And as you can see, this focus directly aligns with the quality workforce pillar in our strategic plan. The program is designed to increase teacher effectiveness by supporting teacher performance through short-term, targeted professional learning collaboration, promoting personal and professional well-being by establishing a supportive community within MCPS, cultivating a positive school division culture by reinforcing the vision and mission of MCPS, and ensuring our students have a quality teacher in every learning environment every day. As you know, we have the Teacher Education and Mentor Program, known as TEAM, for all teachers who are new to the division. The MAPS program is separate from the TEAM program, although both programs share the same purpose, which is to develop and retain teachers. The main points of contact for the TEAM program are our two professional growth specialists, Jen Mullins and Dean Stevenson, and that is designed to be a three-year program. The MAPS program is going to be a referral-based program that is designed to be a short term, about nine weeks, with about 15 hours of direct support, and it will be an intensive program that is individualized to the teacher's specific area of focus. If a collaborator believes that the teacher is fully engaging in the process and they're making progress towards their goals, they can request additional time to continue working with the teacher to help them to meet the determined goals. So I'm now going to introduce you to Erica Loesch, our Professional Learning Coordinator, as she will be the main point of contact for this program.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. Thank you for having us tonight to share about this program. A critical player in the MAPS program is the MAPS collaborator. MAPS collaborators are experienced hourly educators who use their experience to provide targeted support and guidance in growing their assigned teacher's skills, knowledge, implementation of best practices in specific areas that are aligned to the performance standards. This additional guidance and support helps their assigned teachers meet performance standards and goals, resulting in improved student achievement. The MAPS program process begins with a referral, which can come from either the teacher self-referring or a building administrator, who will complete a Google form. That Google form would then be received by me as the Professional Learning Coordinator, so that I could match a MAPS collaborator with the MAPS teacher. From there, an initial meeting would be scheduled to review the MAPS collaboration process. During this initial meeting, a personalized professional learning plan will be developed for a MAPS teacher. The plan will deepen the collective understanding of the identified areas of focus and determine the strategies and activities that will support the MAPS teacher in achieving the goals through the MAPS collaboration. Identified activities would be tailored to meet the individual needs of teachers and may include the MAPS collaborator modeling or co-teaching lessons, assisting the teacher with lesson planning, observing the teacher and providing feedback, providing information about and facilitating the use of MCPS resources, accompanying the teacher on peer observations, engaging in problem-solving discussions for individual students, and maybe sitting in on collaborative team learning meetings to learn more about the current units, instructional plans, and the suggested instructional activities. The MAPS collaborator and teacher will then work together to complete the plan. Two additional MAPS collaboration team meetings will be scheduled, one at the midpoint and one at the endpoint. The purposes of these meetings will be to review progress on the personalized professional learning plan, name the impact on student achievement, and determine next steps. A teacher will receive professional development points for successfully completing a MAPS collaboration. The MAPS program is designed to be a confidential, comprehensive, focused approach in the development of instructional skills and classroom management capabilities. The program is designed to include strategic communication with the building administrator. After the initial meeting, the MAPS collaborator will only have contact regarding the collaboration with the building administrator during those scheduled midpoint and endpoint conferences. The MAPS collaborator and MAPS teacher will determine together what progress updates will be provided at these conferences. This will allow for trust to be established and for the MAPS teacher to be open, honest, and take risks. A MAPS collaboration and the Teacher Performance Evaluation System are separate processes and can run concurrently. While they are separate, participation in the MAPS program can be referenced in the Teacher Performance Evaluation System documentation. The MAPS collaborator will be provided with guidance to ensure they are able to focus on assisting the teacher and not blur the line with evaluation. The idea is that this program can support a teacher in demonstrating professional growth to meet professional standards. We continue to advertise for our MAPS collaborator position. The position is currently posted on the MCPS employment page and will remain open as we want an extensive pool so that we can strategically match our program's collaborators and teachers, as well as meet every request. Collaborators will engage in ongoing professional learning to ensure they are up to date on MCPS practices and expectations, as well as well-equipped to meet the varied needs of our teachers. Thank you for your time this evening. We are excited to get this program fully launched in the coming months, and we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from the board? Mrs. Brooks?
One question, and that is for the MAPS program. Are you finding that teachers are open in seeking this out?
At this time, we have shared the program with division leaders and have gotten positive feedback from them.
Okay.
We are going with a soft start because we want to make sure that we are able to meet the requests. So as we build our collaborator pool, then we'll be able to fully launch the program so that everyone can participate.
Cool, thank you. And, excuse me. So, thank you for, you know, the presentation, but thank you for reaching out to our new and growing students, teachers, so that they can have a successful, you know, time teaching our students. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one question.
Mrs. Williams?
Does this, do you anticipate this program? I don't want to add more burden to teachers. Do you anticipate, I recall years ago, teachers wanting more professional development. We had so many options for professional development. This, to me, sounds like a great program to satisfy a lot of the void the teachers really were looking for. So this, you don't anticipate this adding more burden? It's going, they're not doing this on top of additional professional development?
Yeah, so this is an optional program, and it would be completely personalized to the teacher's goals. So it wouldn't be on top of, it would be something that they're choosing to engage in, they'd be able to set the goal with the collaborator. So, yeah, we're excited to see, to see where it goes and, and the interest that we receive.
And they could, could they incorporate this individualized program and use it in place of some professional development requirements?
Well, they will get professional development points. So yes, their professional development points will go towards their license renewal. We will continue with all of our professional learning that are aligned to our focus areas within our strategic plan, as, at the division level and at the school level. So this would be something that could run in conjunction with those, and they could tend to, to take a deeper dive into some of those learning opportunities, or pick something else that they're interested in really growing on, you know, as a, as a professional within their classroom, and they're looking for some additional strategies and ideas.
Perfect, thank you, Mrs. Keegan. Any other questions? Mrs. Bresia?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I just want to make sure I understand who the collaborators are. So these are discrete positions that we are hiring outside for? Or are these listings for our existing teachers to sign up to do something extra to help more junior teachers?
So we are tapping into teachers who might have recently retired, or teachers who are outside of a full-time position right now, for whatever reason that may be. Because during the day, our full-time teachers have difficulty getting into those classrooms to really provide them with that support. So this is not currently full-time employees within Manassas City.
Okay, so this is, because sometimes you're in our buildings and you see little stickers on doors, like this is a mentor teacher, but that's completely, that's separate from this? Okay.
It's part of TEAM.
That's, that's part of TEAM?
Yeah, yeah, so that, so that's connected to our TEAM program. So those are our mentor teachers, they are full-time MCPS teachers that are providing support to our new teachers, in addition to our lead mentors and our professional growth specialists.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
And when we talk about the MAPS pool, how ideally, what's our target for how many people we're looking for there?
That's difficult to answer, because each person brings different experience, experiences, and also has different time that they're able to give. So we would anticipate that a MAPS collaborator would need to be able to commit to at least five hours a week. If a MAPS collaborator is able to commit to more than that, then we'd be able to have more collaborations assigned to that teacher, or to that collaborator. So it really is going to depend on what our demand is for collaborations, and then having collaborators to meet that demand.
Okay, so this is, it's still a dynamic kind of process, okay. And the last question I have that was inspired by Mrs. Williams, if an admin refers a teacher, is the teacher allowed to say no thank you?
It is an optional program, and we think about the Teacher Performance Evaluation System performance standards. So we would hope that they would engage in the program so that they can address the areas that their administrator may have identified for them, but it is optional.
Okay. Well, that's it for me, thank you.
Anybody else? Mrs. Spalding?
So I just want to verify also, this is voluntary, and the training happens during, essentially during contract hours? It's not, we're not asking them to do anything after their normal hours?
Yes, so it would be during the school day, and the schedule is going to be set by the collaborator and the MAPS teacher. So that will allow for flexibility as to when the collaborator is supporting, to make sure that we're really targeting the area of need that the teacher has or wants to grow in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I just have a few questions. The 15 hours of direct support are during contract hours, and I'm assuming that the coordinator and teacher would have, would need to have opportunities to sit and discuss outside of when that teacher is teaching, correct? So that, would that kind of sometimes bleed into planning time? How would that time be scheduled for the teacher to meet with the coordinator?
So yes, it would be during their, the whole idea around this is really to support student achievement. So while that might be happening during planning time, it would hopefully be able to complement the planning that's happening during that planning time.
Okay. So, a teacher agrees to work with, with the MAPS coordinator, and that MAPS coordinator is working independently of building administration. And the only time, and correct me if I'm wrong anywhere in this, and the building administration is only involved at the two meeting times? What is it, the midpoint meeting and then?
They're actually involved three different times. They're at the initial planning meeting, so that way we can really have a comprehensive understanding of what the target area is, the midpoint conference, and then also the endpoint conference.
Okay. And otherwise, they're independent of administration?
Yes.
Okay. And so the, so any, any interactions, meetings, conversations between the MAPS coordinator and the teacher, those are going to remain confidential between the two?
Yes, and if the MAPS collaborator has, needs any problem solving, then I would be the point of contact to help navigate that with them.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you. Those are my only questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Loesch, and thank you, Ms. Keegan. I, I really appreciated hearing more about the MAPS program. I can see where that's going to be, you know, it fits the need for our teachers that need the additional professional development, and also has a niche with maybe some retired teachers or other people that don't want to commit to a full-time, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up on our discussion agenda, Mr. Hawkins will present information on the closure of schools for the presidential primary on March 5th, 2024.
So good, good evening. We've been notified by Susan Reed, who's the city registrar, or the elections official for the city, that we're going to have a presidential primary on March the 5th. And we do anticipate having, or she anticipates having a large turnout on that day for, for something that happens every four years. So we, we discussed this during the academic committee, as mentioned by Mr. Hollingsworth, and we recommend that we close school that day for students.
Thank you, and we're not going to vote on this tonight, it'll come before us at a future meeting?
It'll come back at the next, at December meeting.
Any discussion, any questions for Mr. Hawkins?
I, I'd like to ask, what are our options? We could extend the school year on a Monday, or?
I think we have enough time.
Yeah.
He gave the answer. We would, we would not have to extend the school year to honor this request.
Thank you very much. Anything else from anybody? Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
On tonight's action agenda, we have our school board legislative priorities. We have discussed this in policy committee, and also before the board in discussion. Mrs. Vice Chair Stevens, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just that, yes, we discussed the legislative, the legislative priorities, excuse me, during policy committee meeting, they were presented at our last school board meeting as a discussion item agenda. We present our legislative priorities every December to city council and our state legislators. And then in January, we have a legislative day down with the general assembly in Richmond, and that's where we discuss the legislative priorities again. Our legislative priorities are generally in line with surrounding school divisions, and they support our strategic learning plan and our long-term and short-term goals.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Can I get a motion?
Chair. I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the 2024 legislative priorities as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Spalding, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the 2024 legislative priorities as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Next up, from Finance and Operations, we have memorandum of understanding for shared services between the city of Manassas and Manassas City Public Schools. Mrs. Spalding, would you care to?
This is really just finalizing something that we've been doing, so it is our recommendation to proceed.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would like to move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the memorandum of understanding for shared services between the city of Manassas and Manassas City Public Schools as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Spalding, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the memorandum of understanding for shared services between the city of Manassas and Manassas City Public Schools as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. All right. Next up is school board members' comments, and I will go first to our student representative, Ms. Island.
Thank you so much. I would just like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. It's coming up in about two weeks. Or is it? Next? Week and a half? Next week, sorry. It's coming up next week, I'm so sorry. I hope everybody has a great break and everybody relaxes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Island. Mr. Hollingsworth?
Ditto. Everyone have a safe holiday and don't eat too much.
Mrs. Bresia?
Have a safe holiday, and I will add, everyone take care of yourself. It is cold and flu, cold flu COVID season, we're in the middle of it, so everybody make sure that you are washing your hands and all that good stuff. I would also like to put in a little plug for the Boys and Girls Club basketball program. Their winter season is starting soon. My child is currently the only girl on the team, it is a co-ed team for five and six-year-olds, so she could use some company with girls in particular, but it's a really great program. We've really gotten a lot out of it personally as a family, so extremely reasonably priced. If you don't know where the Boys and Girls Club is, it's right by, it's right next door, right here in the Jenny Dean vicinity, so please check it out.
Thank you. Mrs. Spalding?
No comments, thank you.
Mrs. Williams?
All right, well, you know what? This is real short and sweet meeting, so I'm going to make my comments a little bit lengthy. Only because, only because we are approaching the end of the year, and I suspect many people will be doing their own things and not paying any attention to us. So I'm going to take advantage of this opportunity. This week is National Young Readers Week. Many of us on the school board had a great time so far this week, reading to many students. I read on Monday to some Weems pre-kindergarten classrooms, it was a lot of fun. And I, I saw this comment from Dr. Phillips, and he says, "When kids are with caregivers or parents, they're exposed to the same language, the same vocabulary words, the same patterns of speaking," which is wonderful, "but books allow them to hear new vocabulary and new ways of putting words together, which expands their ability to make sense of and use the language." So I thought that was, that was just, that was just telling for me. Veterans Day Parade was last Saturday, was a lot of fun. The OH Band did a fantastic job, it was fun listening to them. Manassas City Public Schools is adopting a new core literacy program for K through 3 as outlined by the Virginia Literacy Act. Our resource adoption committee has narrowed the state approved list down to two programs. One's called Benchmark Advanced 2022, and HMH Into Reading 2020. Parents and community members are invited to examine the proposed resources and provide feedback between now and December 1st. So I wanted to just plug that in case anybody had interest. Typically, everything is held at central office, and you absolutely have the opportunity to review any of our new materials. The Washington Post Teacher of the Year and Principal of the Year nomination forms are out and must be submitted by November 4th, I'm sorry, 17th, which is Friday. They're so easy to fill out, so if you have your favorite teacher or your favorite principal, give them a shout out. I think that would be fantastic. There's a division-wide spelling bee for grades one through eight. There is a form that needs to be completed by December 1st. So if, if your students are little spellers, get them to fill that out, I think it would be a lot of fun. The spelling bee is February 8th at 6:30, it's going to be held in the auditorium at OHS. Spirit night at Chick-fil-A to support Baldwin Intermediate School is tomorrow, November 15th, from 7:00 to 9:00. So eat breakfast, when I say 7:00, I mean 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So eat breakfast, eat lunch, or eat dinner, or eat all three, that's what my kids would do. Last week at Met's, parents as education partners learned all about our career and technical education opportunities. They actually got to go visit the rooms, the classrooms, took a tour, it was a lot of fun. There were so much, were so many parents that had no idea what Osborne High School has to offer. So I wanted to shout out to Chris Taylor and her group, and, and really, they're doing a fantastic job at really making sure our families and parents are aware of the opportunities. Saturday learning seminars are every Saturday, just about, parents and students. There's a bus schedule on the website, so check out those bus routes. There's no excuse, there's no excuse. We have got so many opportunities for our students to learn, always, even on the weekends, so take advantage of that. Wednesday, tomorrow, Parent E3 Series, gang awareness is at 5:30 at Osborne High School. Thursday, November 16th is a guitar concert at 7:00. And I ask that you be engaged, parents, students, please be engaged with our school community, it's so important. It really makes us a family, it really does. Pay attention to all the announcements and events at your child's school. Join a PTA and participate in all that your school offers. There's, everything is on the websites, go to your school website. If you don't check Instagram or Facebook or anything like that, be, be proactive and go to the websites. The Athletic Booster Club is desperately looking for new members. They meet the second Wednesday of each month. Wednesday of each month in the OHS cafeteria. Just go, just go. Check your students' website, I already said that. Thanksgiving, we've all talked about Thanksgiving. But I wanted to also say one more thing, we have a lot to be thankful for here at Manassas City Public Schools, and I'm just really thankful for everybody who is engaged, and I ask that more people, please be engaged. This is our one high school, and we truly are a family, and it just makes our experience so much better. And with that, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Brooks, I'll go to you.
Thank you, Chair. I, the holidays are on us, I want to remind everyone to bring light into the darkness and to, you know, reach out to those who are in need. Mental health is so very important, and sometimes a simple smile or letting someone pass in line is all that it takes to just make their day. You know, support each other, love each other, and celebrate, but within reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. Just wanted to say you can start your Christmas shopping early this Saturday at the Mayfield Safety Patrol Bazaar. It starts at 10:30 in the morning, there will be a number of vendors there. It's the Safety Patrol's only fundraiser of the year. I also wanted to make a statement on Week of the Young Reader, audiobooks and graphic novels are books. So please don't ever stop someone or naysay someone who says audiobooks and graphic novels, they're books. And finally, have a safe, have a healthy holiday weekend. Remember that sometimes it's a very stressful time. If you need help, reach out for help. There's always a voice that can listen to you, especially at your kids' schools. Feel free to reach out and have a safe and happy week.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. And I'll echo the thoughts on Young Readers Week. I wanted to thank my fellow school board members that participated, also central office staff that came into our schools, I saw several of you out there, and just members of our community that came in, and it was just very nice, and the kids really enjoyed it, and that was great. I also wanted to acknowledge MEA for coming in tonight. I think, did you guys come straight from the volleyball game?
We were in a meeting.
All right.
Around the corner.
Well, you got the best part, our comments, so MEA is here and represented. After tonight's meeting, many of us are headed down to Williamsburg tonight to attend VSBA, and I want to wish my fellow school board members safe travels, and Dr. Newman, as we head down to that.
And Alba.
And Alba, our clerk. Anybody else?
And her student representative.
No, she can't make it. So we'll be going down to get educated and learn about all kinds of things, so, but it's always a good motivational time and educational time for us, and it's a good time for us to get together to learn about these things. And my last thing is I just wanted to mention, if there's anybody here that did not get a chance to speak at Citizens Comments or for the public hearing, I will stay after for a few minutes tonight if you'd like to speak. And that being it, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas Public Meeting adjourn.
Second?
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board Meeting adjourn. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, oh, any opposed? Motion carries seven zero.